If it's clear you will call the meeting in order to start the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Approval of the January fourteenth, where we invited meeting minutes.
Someone? Oh, I got a change to those minutes. In the January minutes, there actually needs to be a correction to them. Kevin stated that we were doing appointments and I think Dan actually made the comment that for the appointment for the alcohol board, so in December, we didn't actually vote on these minute, we didn't actually vote on this approval. I don't think there's a clerical error, but the minutes need to be adjusted and corrected. So, in December. Yeah, I want this, I want this to be corrected. There was never a vote in December. There was a discussion. No vote was had. And there was only a discussion. No vote was had. And then Kevin, in his remarks in January, said that he, we had just found out about it, so it's impossible for us to find out about it in January and vote on it in December. So if we can make those adjustments to the minute, to the minutes, to make sure that we have that reflected.
That we just found out about what?
That's what I was gonna ask. Found out about what?
The appointments that we could have.
I remember that. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, can I move that we approve with the amendments?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Salary ordinance amendment, HR assistant.
Amber Chel, Department of Human Resources. So, after speaking with the commissioners, we would like to request a title change for both line six eight eight one and six eight eight zero, from HR assistant and HR director to two HR generalist positions. And then a reappropriation of sixteen thousand five hundred forty-eight dollars and forty cents from six eight eight oh to six eight eight one.
Yeah, is this, is this a request on behalf of the commissioners?
Um, yes.
It is, okay.
Maybe your commissioner could come up.
What would that total be?
So it makes both lines sixteen thousand.
Sixty, six zero?
Yes.
Rest of the council is aware. I've tried to, um, to give to Commissioner Pell, Commissioner Byer, and getting different information from them. We were asked to put a salary ordinance amendment on our agenda, and now we're being presented with a new job, title, position. So I think the only thing that we can address today is the salary ordinance amendment for the HR assistant. And I think we need some clarification from Commissioner Pell and Byer on this issue too.
Yeah, Donnie, do you have, do you have anything, are you aware of what the request?
No, I, uh, I, I worked with the two ladies yesterday on this and looked through it. And I was gone all last week, so I didn't have communications with anybody on this prior to yesterday.
Okay.
So, so what are we working on this morning, exactly?
The only thing on our agenda is the salary ordinance amendment for the HR assistant position.
So we're not discussing the generalist?
It's technically not on our agenda.
Jewel, what can we discuss?
Yeah, so, what your agenda isn't what you have advertised is the salary ordinance amendment. So that's what's in front of you for consideration. If there's a change to that, that is wanting to be done outside of that, technically, I would prefer that that would be on the agenda so it's publicly advertised so people can know whether or not, whether that issue's going to be discussed. But the commissioners can make a request that it's done this way, and then it's up to the council as to whether or not they want to consider that.
So just, so probably you're able to listen to the next meeting, the generalist?
The, the changes and things like that, probably, but you can take action on the salary ordinance which is presented to you.
Okay. And also, they did not request us to put a reappropriation on our agenda. All they requested was the salary ordinance amendment.
The reappropriation will be done in March if the amendment is approved.
So we can talk about, uh, thank you Jewel, uh, so we can talk about the salary ordinance amendment. And I've got some questions on what we did receive. And I, I don't know if this is for Amber or, or Donnie, so you guys take a stab at it. Um, we got payroll change forms. We actually got two of them. And one was signed by our prior HR director in December of twenty-four. And it looks like, uh, a performance review was given and a raise was, you know, suggested. And then the next payroll change form was showing a classification change, and also then an increase of ten percent on top of what was given and, uh, or signed off in December. I guess a couple of things. One, all the payroll changes were retroactive to one one twenty-five. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, and then Debbie, uh, even though we hadn't approved it, we went ahead and the, the payroll got changed to one one twenty-five. So, timing wise, we aren't looking at it until February because we just found out on the agenda. So, one, that's legal, right? We can do that as long as we approve it before the end of the year, calendar year. So, okay. Ideally, it would have been, what, on our January agenda for the December change? Okay, just, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, technically, it should have gone on our January agenda for, for February one.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, 'cause December, you've already approved the salary, the salary ordinance, so then the January meeting, you should have done that.
Okay.
The change, but I don't think they knew about it at the time of the.
Okay. And then on the payroll change form in December, I only noticed Megan Smith's signature, but no one else's signature. Is that normal, or does it normally get written, normally gets approved?
Amber was just Megan's, 'cause she was her, I guess, direct supervisor.
But there's not a, there's not any other signatures on it, but the other one that we got, there's Scott Pell and your signature. So, what is the procedure? Do we normally have more than one signature?
My, my signature's usually on it, but not until it reaches my office.
So we didn't get, we got one without your signature and should have had your signature on it. Uh, so what's the total increase that you're asking for from December nineteenth of twenty-four to today? What's the, what's the total amount? I got forty-three, forty-six from, uh, from the January twenty-eighth sign-off, which is ten percent of what you were making. But what was the raise before that? And again, just, just because I don't, I couldn't follow the numbers. Yeah.
So that was the five percent that was approved for in the budget.
Okay. And how much was that? Five percent of?
Um.
That's your salary.
Yeah.
Which would be? Well, it couldn't have been forty-three, 'cause she went to forty-three. Any idea? I'm just, I'm just, forty-one hundred. I'm just trying to get, hold on one sec, Erin. I'm just trying to get an idea of how much raise we got in two months. Again, appreciate you clarifying for me that the five percent was from what we did at budget time, and then another forty-three hundred. Okay. I'm finished, Erin. If you had a question?
So, Megan gave you a pay raise, because I guess my understanding is during the budget process, the pay raises were automatically baked in for everyone?
The three percent was.
The three percent.
And then two percent was discretionary.
So what was the, so again, to Sherri's point, what was the total increase? Was it more than the five percent that she signed off on?
No, everything gave me was the five percent. And then the commissioners, um, so there, Megan was wanting to change my title to HR coordinator after taking on additional duties and well outside the scope of the HR assistant position. That was never completed. And so when, so Commissioner Pell and Commissioner Byer decided to give me a ten percent increase after speaking with Debbie about what, how they could do that. And then with not having an HR director and wanting to change those positions, they were asking for, I'm asking on their behalf, for the additional, for the now additional job responsibilities that I have.
Yeah, I appreciate you. They put you in a very awkward position, and I apologize that they did that.
Yeah, I hate that for you. And Donnie, I guess you probably weren't, do you know?
The five percent, yes, I knew all about that. The other, I did not know, and I have nothing against that.
Right.
By any means, but, um, well deserved. However, I was not in that conversation at all.
And just to reiterate, Amber, I'm not, I'm not coming after you. I'm just, I'm just asking about the process and how this all came about. And I know we can't talk about what's not on the agenda, but I, I guess I would just recommend for, for March that we actually try to have the paperwork well in advance for the classification changes.
I think from what I, from the conversations I have been a part of, this happened back in November by the compensation committee, that somebody along the way promised that this increase would happen.
Okay, 'cause I'm like, something's not adding up.
And I don't know, I mean, nothing against Amber, but those commitments can't be made outside of a council meeting.
That's what I'm saying. Something like, I'm like, there's something in the middle.
Amber was given false information to begin with.
Okay.
That this increase would happen, no matter what, because of some compensation committee.
I would provide clarification on that, because there wasn't, in the actual compensation meeting that happened in November, there wasn't a promise of a pay. There was a discussion of, these are positions we need to look at. One of them was the two HR positions as they are currently written, as well as all of our first deputies. But there wasn't a, a promise of a pay raise. We were asked if we would consider a pay raise and bring it back to the council because of a change in job duties, and then we didn't, that did not come back to the council.
Right.
And then wasn't the contract terminated by the commissioners for us to get the?
Yes, the, and the actual copies.
Because it was, so we'll come back to that another, another day, I guess.
Okay, now this, this brings a little more clarity, 'cause I'm, I'm listening to all this, and I'm like, something was promised or committed, or something happened, like, it didn't magically just, there you, thank you Amber. Like, it didn't magically, poof, and something happened. So, there was some discussion, it sounds like at the compensation committee, where, excuse me?
There was no.
I understand, but something happened in the compensation committee, a discussion, uh, and it sounds like those things didn't happen. Uh, maybe people were putting the cart before the horse, and I know there was a, a contract that they were gonna try to push through in order to potentially get some salaries to say, oh, this is what should be done. But it didn't happen. So now that it didn't happen, you were probably told, oh, well, wait till this happens, and then we'll be able to get you this justification. But it didn't happen.
It's not completely accurate.
That's not.
So, at our budget hearings last summer, um, this council did not approve the last third to get commissioners' salaries to the minimum. We also did not approve the second third to get the two HR positions to the midpoint. And several statements were made by the council that, and elected officials, that there was a concern with how any position, the commissioners or any positions under them were graded and benchmarked in the salary study. So there was a discussion at our compensation meeting that said, hey, if there is a legitimate concern here, maybe we need to have these positions looked at again and remove HR commissioners from the discussion and see if these were funded correctly. Along with that, there had been several mentions of how we are funding or, yeah, paying our first deputies. The first deputy positions were not included in the NFP study, and so those were added to that list as well. There was no desire to, like, rush anything or push anything through. It was, let's fix this, because the council has identified a problem with the existing compensation study.
Amber, while you're up here, because Mr. Pell and Mr. Byer made these decisions, why are, where are they today?
Um, so Commissioner Byer had a pre-scheduled vacation that, and then Commissioner Pell was unable to get the day off from school.
Thank you.
What decisions did they make? What decisions did they make?
The January raise, the January raise that it sounds like Mr. Lawson was not privy to.
Oh, 'cause I'm looking at, I think we all got an email from Commissioner.
We did, at seven forty-six AM this morning.
Yeah. So, well, can't make a decision on it today, so go till next morning.
We are making a decision, aren't we, on the salary amendment?
We could, yes, 'cause the salary amendment is what's on our agenda, so the council could approve the salary change.
Or do we put it all in one agenda item for March? I don't, I'm just asking.
Actually, I would move that we get a higher level of details. She, you're getting the pay now, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay, you're getting paid now. I would, I would really like to get a higher level of details and have commissioners that have made these suggestions present at the meeting. Yeah, so I would, I would move that we table to March.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same thing?
Thank you, Amber.
Um, salary ordinance amendment, commissioners in-house legal.
Hi. So, we are asking for a new salary line for our county attorney.
Yeah, as I say, there isn't an existing line, so we don't have to make a new line.
That line hasn't been funded in.
That line hasn't been funded in years.
Over a decade, right?
Well, since Bob's been legal, yeah.
Over fifteen and a half years.
Sixteen, seventeen years, probably.
So. I did ask Commissioner Pell to provide us a copy of the offer letter. Uh, he was going to email that to me last night, but I've not received anything as of this morning.
Then if we don't have details, again, I would move that we, until we get the details, we table it till March.
Before we do, can I, I guess, sorry, I, I'm not disagreeing with you, Dan, but, uh, we also got yesterday, I think, from, from you, Debbie, you were passing on to us a proposal for the budget reappropriation for legal, from legal services to the newly requested line. And in that, who wrote this document? So, you know what, Amber, I promise I'm not picking on you today. I know you're like, well, I hate to, I hate to see it.
I'm sorry.
Where you are. It's this document, Erin, that we got from Debbie yesterday, and I'm gonna give you a second to call it up unless I have an extra copy.
Who, who emailed it?
Debbie Crumb emailed it to all of us.
Title proposal for title change.
And I, I have notes on mine.
Early as.
Yeah, no, 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 no. It's, it's this, it's this one pager. Let me see if I have extra copies.
I got it. I have it in my email.
Okay. While they're looking for it, Amber, I had a couple of questions, and I'm sure you got this information from someone because you're not proposing to be the in-house legal counsel. But it says a couple of things. It says the proposed salary of one seventy-five is in line with the cost of the previous contract of attorney, county attorney, who was already utilizing county health benefits. So the associated health insurance costs are, are already budgeted in the health insurance line now. I, I would just take exception to that. Again, I think you probably got these notes from someone, if I had to guess, and maybe, but, Bob Clutter, the previous attorney, did take county insurance, but it's my understanding that he paid for those out of his own pocket and reimbursed the county.
He was paying the employee premium. Employee premium, okay.
Did we ever get reimbursement back?
From Bob, he paid it monthly.
Okay.
How does that work?
He wrote a check to. Yeah, he wrote a check to our office, and we would deposit in our line. But he, it was the employee portion, just like the rest of the.
Okay. The other, I guess some of the other things in there were, or weren't in there. I think perf was something that was gonna be provided to the in-house attorney. And I don't see HSA distribution in here, assuming that person would be able to take advantage of what they can get, and maybe then some if, if they would, uh, apply for those benefits of extra. I don't see anything about a paralegal, but again, I know that person, and those commissioners aren't here to answer that. But I, I'm just curious how that person can work without one. I don't see anything for state bar expenses.
I believe she takes care of those, is what, is what my understanding is.
Takes care of them?
She takes care of them herself.
Okay, and then, um, I don't know what other professional fees are, but, uh, I, I did, and again, I talk better probably in spreadsheets, and that's, that's a problem, but, uh, I did a spreadsheet to see what you assert here, that the county attorney will lead to considerable cost reduction while maintaining essential services. And again, I'm all for that, if that's in fact the case, but just based on my little scribbles here with footnotes, I come up with an annualized, I'm not looking at the, the partial year, but I come up with an annualized cost of two seventy-one, six fifty versus our prior attorney of two forty. And just for fun, I, I'll, I'll give this to you because, and I can give some to the council, 'cause I, I just did this on my own. It's not audited. I didn't, I didn't have the time, but, um, I, I think it's worthy of discussion just because we're talking about real money here, and, you know, I think as our role as the fiduciary, it probably would make sense if we, if we actually get to some specifics. If we can do that today, great. If we can't, then, you know, we've always got March, which is starting to really pile up. So, do you have any thoughts on that? I, I guess this, the third line item, health insurance and related benefits, is inaccurate because I have zero there for a contract employee versus what I, I considered a thirty-five percent number to add. Is that reasonable, Kaylee?
So that's a reasonable number that you have listed, but it was something that was already being provided under a contractor, so then we would still carry on.
Right, so I should add in a, some, some kind of number minus employee premiums for, for Mr. Clutter's comparison, right?
Can I ask a question on the insurance real quick? So, um, and maybe this changes when she becomes an house, I don't know, so I don't have that. But in her, the current contract that she has, since the county also greaseraided family insurance to Copeland for medical, dental, vision, and life, and maybe I've missed it, but I don't see anywhere in here where it's possible her reimbursing the premiums. Is that?
She is reimbursing the premiums.
Current contract, okay.
And malpractice, I didn't see an estimate for that. Is that?
It's, my understanding is about nine hundred dollars what she currently pays. What she expressed to us is that she's covered through October, and I believe we have enough money in our budget under insurance to cover that nine hundred dollar cost.
Does, do they audit that, though? Is that an audible, uh, number? Because the, by taking Boom County on, her scope of operation changes, and nine hundred may not be enough. There may be an audit at the end of the policy.
Well, we would need to get a quote and we'll not get a lockdown number for us.
Yeah, we need to firm that number up, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
But I do feel like we have enough money in our insurance line to cover that malpractice.
Kaylee, on perf, I threw in a.
I'm sorry, before we finish. So, you have enough for the insurance property to cover?
So on perf, I just threw in, uh, what I thought was the right number. It's six point six eight percent times salary. Is that accurate or not?
Eleven point two percent and then three percent.
Okay, so.
So take eleven point two times her salary.
Which is, okay.
If, if it's a hundred and seventy-five.
All right, so I've got a number in there that's.
And then a three percent.
And then, so I've got a number in there that's too small.
Yes. It's more like fourteen, but you have eleven point two and then four.
You've done it?
No, that's how we pay it. That's how it is. Yeah, that's how we have recorded it.
If you had the number.
No, I don't have the number.
I used to be a lot quicker with numbers, Debbie, but now that we're on public record, we can see fifteen two eight eight.
If I didn't remember.
Okay, so I'd just like to get this, like, accurate so that by the time we get to the end of this, in a year from now, we can say, how much did we save or, or not save? And again, I just put estimates in there. If you guys see the footnote for F and then H are unknowns. Is there a local bar expense over?
Yes, um, I have it off my head, though, but yes, it should join us with the county bar.
Why would we pay that?
It's just, it's gonna depend on what the arrangements are. Those are the types of expenses I would be paying.
But have we accrued, why would we include a fee if we haven't? Can, do we pay your local bar?
You don't pay anybody for that. I pay that off.
So, wow.
No, but.
Well, I think there's also.
So you, so you paid out a diversion referral? So the county, so the county pays for?
County doesn't.
The county doesn't.
I'm sorry, so you have a fund to pay for it? Okay.
So usually, like.
But I don't pay for a state bar.
Okay.
Those are the types of fees that usually an employer would pay, depending on the situation, so.
But there's no reason for us to say we were gonna pay it?
No.
Okay, so I wouldn't include, that's a, that's an optional clause.
Well, and again, since we've not been given any information, like the contract, for example, uh, these are just things that would normally maybe come up so that we could determine what, what is her expectation and what's it represent, if anything, on this document. What about short-term and long-term disability? And again, Kaylee, I'm looking to you because it would appear that you're here to address some of this.
So, uh, I don't know if she signed up for short-term disability, but as for long-term, we would pick up that cost of each other.
Right, okay.
It's based on gross pay, so I don't know much of it.
Okay.
Uh, my question, desk phone? I mean, if we can get rid of our desk phones, I'd be more happy to give that to somebody. So I don't know that you.
The only reason I put it in here is 'cause it was in this memo.
Oh, 'cause I was gonna say, I think every desk comes with a phone.
Actually, no, I, this is, this was in the memo that you sent us, so that's why I put it on. You didn't read it.
Okay, I didn't read it.
Well, I'm just telling you that it was in there, and, and I was a little confused that there's not a cell phone line item here because generally we would pay for a cell phone.
She does not want a county-issued phone.
She doesn't want a county-issued phone, but Jewel, I hate to put you on the spot, but wouldn't, wouldn't an in-house council have to have a county-issued phone for FOIA requests, like?
No. Because, uh, to reclaim, there was, attaches, um, so I can tell you when I was corporation counsel for the city of Taro, I did not have a city phone. It was my personal phone. I didn't take any staff or anything like that.
I just wanna make sure the crowd knows what, what my lane is, and it's obviously not attorney, but.
Uh, any other question?
So why do we have office overhead? Don't we have a space?
Hey, Erin, I put that in there because I thought an in-house legal counsel was a different, uh, situation where you'd actually, in accounting, you'd have overhead for that space as a permanent fixture. I don't know the answer to that. But again, this was, Erin, this was my attempt to try and get some light on what the expenses could be. Does anybody have a comment to Erin's question?
Do we have an office space now?
She's currently using our former HR director's office space.
So we have office space.
But, but from a, an accounting one-on-one perspective, the lane that I actually do know something about, uh, generally, cost accounting would say, there's a bit of overhead there, and what is that, what is that number for electric, you know, for electricity, for power, for?
I mean, we'd be providing it for anyone that was in our office.
I swear.
That's, that's helpful, Erin. I'm just, I'm just.
Listen, listen, hold on, hold on, hold on. Sherri's the only council member with financial expertise up here. We were providing it for our HR director, and you just said that, like you just said, we would be providing it for anyone, right? So, I, I, it, it, it's laughable because I'm like, I see it on here, but we were providing it for anybody that came in here and started. So, accounting one-on-one, I'm like, we would provide it for anyone. I just wanna make sure that's correct. All right, so.
Which is an expense, no matter what.
It is. That's what I'm saying. So if it's an expense, no matter what, are we going back and looking and saying, all right, Kaylee, how much is, how much are you costing the county for your lights? Are we doing it for Amber? Are we doing it for Tony? We're not doing it on an individual basis when we hire someone at the county level? Are we doing this for every single employee that the commissioners bring on board?
I have to appreciate, though, that she's trying to quantify what costs.
I love, I love this, and here's what I want to, we didn't do this, we've never done this for any other employee that the commissioners have hired. We haven't.
We've never, we've never had an employee.
Yes, we have.
Hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in house employee.
We have, we have the former shift that we had at a hundred and ten thousand dollars and ninety-two thousand dollars in benefits. We did.
We've never had an in-house council, Erin.
We, we haven't had in-house councils.
So I'm trying to put some light on the subject and show the county taxpayers what it is we're contemplating.
I love it.
And it actually is a big issue if you've read the paper lately. I think people are a little upset that things are being done so quickly with. And it actually is a big issue if you've read the paper lately, I think people are a little upset that things are being done so quickly without proper vetting. And in a fashion and in a speed that we've not seen before, so what I think is gonna end up being a two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar expense. Requires a line-by-line item discussion, if it's laughable, then I put office overhead on, let it be laughable. I think we're starting to fill up the screen and the rooms because this is an issue that people wanna have some light on.
So here, here, here's where it's at, we've been told time and time again, that personnel is not the council's lane. Time and time again, we've been told this, how many times have we sat in this room have been told, so many of you sitting in here looking at me. Have been told, have heard us be told time and time again, county council members, it is not your lane, it is not your purview to get involved in personnel matters. Jewel, excuse me, I'm talking, Jewel, can you please stand up here for one moment and tell us, as a county council, do we get involved in personnel matters? I need a legal answer, is it our lane?
So, the hiring of employees is not.
Thank you.
Right.
It is, you know, I spoke to Jennifer a little bit earlier, this is what I told to, well, listen, Don.
Thank you.
Uh, this is what I told to Kenny and you, Erin.
Thank you.
Is, the hiring of employees falls within the purview of the commissioners. The job of the council is the financial aspect of it.
There you go. Now, hold on, hold on, hold on, excuse me, excuse me, it's still, I still have the floor, I'm talking, keep going please.
And so, it is, you look at the numbers and, and you apply it to that rule. I would, I would tell you that there was a large dispute, Commissioner, you brought it up regarding, um, Mr. Nielsen in the transition there.
Thank you.
Without devoting, involving attorney-client information or protection, you know, we, there were a lot of discussions regarding that. And what the role of the council was and what the role of the commissioners were. And so it, this council moved forward with the funding of that, the creation of the new line item. Because that is a job that the commissioners said needed to be filled.
So with that, excuse me, so with that, what happened? This council was approached by the commissioners to hire the former sheriff to the tune of ninety thousand dollars plus an additional ten thousand dollars that was in our budget. Plus ninety-two thousand dollars in benefits, I set up here, all of this is on the record, you can go back and view all of this. I questioned it, Jennifer sat here and said, when I questioned about ninety-two thousand dollars, Marshall said that was normal. It is not our role to question what the commissioners want to do when they wanna hire someone. I even brought up the same discussion around the job description, it is not our role, we had a lengthy discussion with our legal counsel about it. So here's where I'm back, we as a council have already funded the legal counsel fund, the line item, am I correct in that Debbie?
Correct, as a contract.
Not the county attorney line, correct?
We have fun, I didn't, I did not, excuse me, excuse me.
I'm trying to provide clarification.
I, I, I don't need your clarification, I'm, I'm, no, I'm not, I'm not misrepresenting anything, I'm not misrepresenting anything.
Legal line, which is a contract.
I said the legal line, that's what I said, the legal line has been funded, I didn't say anything about a county attorney, I said the legal line has been funded, the legal line has been funded. The commissioners are asking for a reapproach to move it to an in-house attorney. To have them move this to a reapproach, that is their, if they wanna do that, that's their right, if they wanna do that, that, they have that right. Just like they wanted to bring in Mr. Nielsen as a full-time employee, they have that, they have that right to be able to do that. Furthermore, there's actually code, Indiana IC Code, that gives the commissioners the right to be able to bring in and hire their own attorney. If you look at IC Code thirty-six, two, two dash thirty, the executives may employ and fix the compensation of an attorney to represent and advise the executives. We are arguing and debating over, I know what you said, Sherry, the costs and things of that nature. Breaking this down is great, it's fine, but the lines have already been funded, we're debating this, and at the same time, SB one is at the state house where we're gonna lose three million dollars in revenue. The line item has already been funded, the commissioners have this right, and we've already set precedent as a council, well, this has been done before. And we've been told this is not our lane, I just find it so mind-boggling and interesting that all of a sudden, when the commissioners come in, I haven't been to the count, to the commissioners meeting. I had to go back and watch them online, but the actions that were taken, the commissioners were, were voted in by the people of Boone County. Commissioner Byard did attend the last meeting, he said it best, he said, hey, I was voted in and people probably didn't want the same thing as what they've had in the past. That's their right, they get to do and make the changes that they want, and because they've done that, we should respect it, like, we've been told again, time and time again. Personnel matters are not up to us, why are we fighting this?
So, can I provide some clarification, you're correct that there, well, you said, oh my god, well, okay, so you're correct about the statute, that they do have the right to hire an attorney. And they have a way to hire and pay their attorney right now in their contract line. There is also a statute that says the county fiscal body is responsible for fixing the number of officers, deputies and employees. Describing and classifying the positions and services and adopting schedules of compensation. We are being asked to create a new job, a new position, they have a way to have an attorney currently under their contract line. We also, this council also has a history of telling our elected officials in departments that we do not create new jobs, new positions in the middle of the year. And we've asked them to come back to us at budget hearings several times, so I don't know, if the council were to say, this is gonna stay, this is gonna stay on a contract basis, we're not preventing them from having an attorney. It sounds like there are a lot of questions still that maybe this needs to be tabled and brought back to us at a different time.
Can I interject, um, first of all, Erin, I, you have more history on here than I do, so the whole idea about the, um, the Nielsen position is helpful. And I'm gonna try to stay really calm on this because I don't want us to fight in front of the, I, I, I just don't wanna argue. And so, one, I apologize if I got a little, uh, short, secondly, Erin, to your point, the reason I felt like, and again, maybe it's just because I've been here on a year, for a year and a half. But I felt like we needed to put some more attention to this and do line-by-line discussions, even if some of them were comedic in nature. Because the, the outrage that I'm hearing from constituents is, one, is it really cheaper to go in-house versus contract employee? And, and that is part of the basis for this, um, spreadsheet, Erin, because I felt like it's not just providing an attorney, it's bringing that person in-house. And again, to your point, a different line item, but, but I'm not so sure, and again, as somebody that's in the finance realm that talks about overhead for office space, which is again comedic. I thought we ought to discuss and actually get into the detail of whether or not this is truly a cost savings, and I'm not convinced it is. Which might yield us to a different position, are we sure we want it to be an in-house counsel versus contract? So, I'm just explaining a little bit more about why I think that is our lane, and, and I wanna defer back to Erin real quick. Because I'd like to hear your thoughts, Erin, on, does that, does that change anything that you just said because you still don't, and again, I mean this, like, does that change your response? Because you don't think we should be looking at the line items, and I mean this, like, I'm not trying to be coy, I'm just asking, Erin.
I'll tell you, no.
It doesn't, because you, you don't think we should talk about.
I'll give you the answer, in the year and a half that you've been here, and all the employees that we've hired, commissioners or not, we've never done an analysis like this. You asked, I'm giving an answer, we, we, we've never done an analysis like this. Jennifer just said it, we normally reserve the time to hire someone during the budget cycle, she didn't have that same energy when we did it for Mike Nielsen, she glossed over it. Again, all of what I'm saying is all, yes, she did, Jennifer, it's all, okay, it's all on the record, everybody can go back and look at the facts and the details. Number, number two, when it comes down to it, again, all on the record, all, me and maybe a couple of other council members. Have been the only one, time and time again, who have said, what are we going to do to look at reducing the cost of our legal counsel and look at bringing it in? I've said that every year during the budget cycle.
Okay.
Coincidentally, they bring in an option to try to reduce the cost, and now it's getting thought tooth, tooth and nail. So I'm looking at this and I'm saying, we're arguing with the commissioners, well, I'm not arguing with them, I haven't been to any of the meetings, I don't know what's going on. But I'm looking at this and I'm like, okay, if they're saying that they can reduce the cost and they figured this out, I'm assuming that they must have something to be able to do this. But again, our legal counsel just told us, hey, they have the ability to be able to bring someone in-house and it's their right. We have changed folks over, again, Debbie, please, not putting you on the spot, but correct me if I'm wrong, we went through the same process, I'm using the sheriff as an example. Because it was a ninety thou, it was a hundred thousand dollar plus position, we went through the same exact process and there was a lengthy debate. Of which our legal counsel told us, you have no leg to stand on, you can't do anything, figure it out.
All right.
So now, I look at it, I'm like, why, why is this, like, what's going on, like, all right, we, they changed the county attorney over sixteen years, is Jennifer gonna do something with it? She worked for Bob, and that was like, knowing this?
That's known.
They, oh, 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 okay, I, I'm not saying it has a bit of secret, but I find it very odd and, I don't know what he's shaking his head for, I find it very odd and strange. That all of a sudden, everyone is like, oh my god, I'm like, the commissioners, they made a change, and I'm just kind of like, okay, they, they made a change, they said they're gonna save money, that's their right and their prerogative.
But, okay, and I appreciate that Erin, but isn't it our right to just look at, this is not like.
I'm not saying that you're not your right, I do, it is.
But isn't it our right to also look and see if the assertion that this is gonna be cheaper is in fact a valid assertion? And that really was the genesis, I, I haven't even met Beth Copeland, I can't wait to meet her and actually work with her, I don't, it, that's not, that's not my issue. My issue as a fiduciary is to say, is that assertion accurate? Because not only have I heard about it a lot from constituents who are saying, Sherry, is this really cheaper? Then it's also been written up in the paper that this is a significant number, this is not your normal employee, and it's going from contract to in-house. So that's the genesis, and I don't have the history with the whole ex sheriff, whatever, but, I mean, I just think we should be expected to do this, and I'm sorry, it hasn't been done. And that appears to be a precedent for you that, that we haven't done this, so maybe it's just, maybe, maybe it's just because this is somewhat of my lane. And I thought it was a pretty big number and those assertions didn't quite hold water with me, I hope that she is cheaper. Because that would, that would make me feel better as a fiduciary, so I just trying to set the record straight that that was my, that was my genesis and my impetus for wanting to do this. And I don't know if other, we keep, seem to be controlling the floor, what are other people's thoughts?
Can I say, let me add this, I can agree with what you're saying, that, yes, you should do this, I wanna make sure that for every employee that we hire, we do the same exact thing moving forward. That we come in and we write down every single thing and say, hey, for any employee that we hire, we, we do this same analysis.
So a janitor for Max Mendenhall.
We should do the same exact thing, because we, because guess what we do with Max Mendenhall's staff, we outsource some of that. So we need to say, hey, is it cheaper to have Max Mendenhall's staff outsourced?
Maybe.
And we, 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 we should do that, because some of these costs, you know.
So you're, you're all for it if we do it on a consistent basis?
I'm saying we need to be consistent in, in, in what we.
I'm happy to put this template together.
We, we should have this template, and then, when you look at, when you go into some of these costs, these are things that, as I said, we're gonna have no matter what for any employee. And then I look at the employee that we're, the, the person, I'm sorry, not the person, the role that we're employing, we're hiring an attorney for the entire county. And as you said, you've had people, constituents tell you they're concerned, I've had constituents tell me, that's a great thing. I, I've had people, I've had other elected officials say, great job, I think that's a great move that you're bringing legal counsel in-house, that's a great move, I think you guys are doing the right thing. So there are people on the opposite side saying, great.
And I'm not on one side, I just wanted to see.
I'm not saying you're on one side, I just think I need to be conveyed that people are saying the opposite as well.
For a quarter million dollars, I think we need to do some, what, sorry, Dan.
Sherry, I, I wanna thank you for preparing this, this is a great information, I think moving forward, yeah, maybe we do need to follow this pattern, and it's not our right, I, I believe it's our responsibility. I mean, and, and, uh, thanks for coming to the table with the information.
I'll agree with both of you, Erin's right that the commissioners can hire anybody they want to. I agree we should have the information before they do that so we can look it over.
One concept, sorry.
But they wanna fire Nick Parr. We have, we have no say-so on that, and when they hire somebody, take his place, we have no say-so. But if they wanna give him another two hundred thousand dollar bill, then we should have some say-so in that.
Or if anyone wants to add a new position that hasn't been introduced before.
That's right. That's right.
I have a, can I ask a quick question, her contract says that she does, um, her services do not include services for large economic development projects. Does this include the LEAP district and what's going on with that, and if so, what's the county going to do?
I can't speak on that, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I don't think Bob represented us for the LEAP district, we had outside counsel, we had Ice Miller do all of our bond work for LEAP district.
Bob was involved with those litigation details?
For LEAP, I'm almost confident Bob said in the commissioners meeting recently, he didn't do any work on LEAP, it was all done by Ice Miller, I'm almost overly confident in that.
Wasn't Bob involved in the discussions with IABC, um, for the pilot payment project on behalf of the commissioners?
Yes, absolutely.
So maybe we can get some clarity on who did what, and then also clarity on your question, Jennifer, if, if she's not gonna be involved in large economic development efforts, what does that constitute? What's that defined as, and then who would we, who would we insert, who would we have to hire, and again, add to this, add to this document. And again, some of that's probably not known.
Would that fall under redevelopment, which would also be Bob's concern?
I don't know.
Any question?
Any other thoughts, Kayla?
So, yeah, I, I do have thoughts, so what exactly, are, are we still not moving forward then because we're saying we didn't get the information? Cause that, I guess that's where I'm.
So what's on the agenda as a salary ordinance amendment, this would be a new, um, position on the salary ordinance. So they currently have a way to pay their attorney in their, um, legal consulting contract line, does the council wish to create a new job position or?
They can, they can leave it as, as is, right, in the contract?
Yeah, cause they have, I mean, they, we're not preventing them, by not creating the new job position, we're not preventing them from being able to have the attorney.
Correct.
It could give us time to get more information, and Erin, I, I understand your concern that we haven't done this before, I think the stretch. For me, I see it as, is we're taking something that's been outsourced and bringing it in-house. As opposed to, you know, other types of employee and staffing positions we've had to discuss the last few years.
Let me clarify, we have done it before.
The spreadsheet?
No, we've done this type of conversion before.
So, and again, just who did we have that was outsourced?
No, I'm saying we've done, we've done this type of conversion before where we've taken a position, we've been brought to from the commissioners and said, hey, we wanna make this a full-time position then.
And what, what was that?
It was Mike Nielsen, well, we made him the project manager, we were brought, this, the council was brought a position, uh, the same kind of salary ordinance, outside of a budget cycle. We did it, ninety-two thousand, I'll make sure for the next meeting I have all the documentation and records, I think it's.
I'm not worried about that.
Well, it's not you, as you said, everybody watching and all the public, I'll make sure they have it.
Erin, can I ask a genuine question, so when, um, the project manager position came before us, I recall several council members, I think you, asking. Where all that job posting was listed at, how long it had been listed, and how many applicants, um, we had received. Don't hear you asking those same questions now, and so I just genuinely wanna know, like, why are you questioning it then, but I don't hear you asking those questions now, and may, and maybe your position has changed.
It's the same thing that, same kind of approach that you've taken, why not, because I haven't asked those questions, I asked, asked Commissioner Pell and Commissioner Byard those same questions. And they were like, hey, we actually get to the process, so I actually reached out to both of them and said, how did you come up with this individual? And they explained it, so I did ask this.
To that end, then, I think this maybe goes back to your question, or your question, Erin, about do we approve this now or do we table it? Ideally, like Nirvana would be that we had all this information before today and that one of the two commissioners who hired said, the in-house legal counsel or legal counsel would be here to answer. So is there some clarity that we might get between now and March with, you know, actually? So, is there some clarity that we might get between now and March with, you know, actually trading some information, saying, hey, guys, can you fill this in? Can you get her, can you get us her contract, the, the offer letter, uh, her comments on short-term, long-term disability? Again, uh, the fees that I've listed are estimated, which are literally estimates on what it's gonna take for, you know, continuing ed expenses. Would that be better for the council and to have a little more daylight, and maybe one of those two commissioners to ask the questions that you've already asked, Aaron? That, like, what, where was the job posted, how many came through the, you know, through the filter to, to reach it to the, to this point? And then, how did you decide? I mean, that, that might be helpful, if you've had that conversation, Aaron.
Uh, again, I, I go back to it. Why, why are we as a council going back down that lane? So, if, 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 if we're gonna do that, I would say that if Mr. Nance posts a position, just using him as an example, for someone in his office, we, we better take that same energy. If Debbie posts for a deputy in her office, we, we, uh, hold on, hold on, we, we, we better use the same energy and say, hey, when did you post this job, how many applicants did you get? I, I go back to it, our legal counsel just stood up here and said that it is not this council's job to be involved in personnel matters. We are going down a slippery slope because, what, what's gonna happen next? Is that as soon as the commissioners get into the lane of telling us, you need to set a budget at X, Y, and Z, or telling you, you need to create a spreadsheet, or your spreadsheet is X, Y, and Z, and someone snaps back and says, that's not your job, we're the fiscal body, that's our role. I'm just saying, we don't, and we've been told time and time again and again, you've always been there for, you said, a year and a half, history has shown, it's not our lane, why are we involving ourselves in personnel matters?
The only reason it reaches my, like, the red face test for me is, it's two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. I don't care if Mi- Michael Nance hires someone for thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars, I don't think we need to go through that process. But for a quarter million and up, uh, that, that, that's why it's, that's why I'm even talking about it, Aaron. I agree with you, I don't wanna go through, I don't wanna put Michael Nance through, or any, Max Mendenhall through, all this stuff for something much less, but this is, this is a big number.
I'm not, I'm not, and again, I'm not refuting it's a big number, I go back to the role. You're hiring someone who has went to school for an extensive amount of time, they're an attorney, you're, you're going to compensate them for the role. Again, I'm not undermining, demeaning anyone who is a janitor, but you're not going to pay a janitor two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. You, you, you're just not. But again, you're carving out an exception for someone because you're paying them, you're paying them for their skills. It's always the analogy, like an electrician, if he charges you X amount of dollars, and it's like, oh, man, you're not charging him for the time, you're charging him for all the hours that he went to school, all of the time that he put in. It may have taken him fifteen minutes to do the job, but they put in eight years of work, went the apprenticeship, became a journeyman, all of that. Again, you're carving out an exception, cause you're saying, oh, it's this amount of money, it doesn't, I, I get that part, but I'm saying, again, that is not our lane as a council. We, we are not involved in personnel matters, because again, if you say it, the next thing is gonna be someone who is making a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Now, that's the new threshold, well, you know what, now it's fifty thousand dollars, because this person has a hyper-specialized skill set, and it's like, well, we gotta make sure that they can do it.
I appreciate your perspective, really.
Sorry, I have another question, uh, kinda shifting away from the spreadsheet. Um, if she is in-house, is she full-time, forty hours a week?
I would have to defer to Scott and Tim on that one, I believe that would be the intent, I don't think it'd be forty, cause most of our offices are thirty-five, but I'm honestly not sure on that one.
Okay. My other question is, is, from understanding, um, Ms. Copeland potentially ha- has some other clients, such as the Courtville, maybe some other entities, I'm not sure how many. When would she be working on those compared to when she's working here, if she's full-time in-house?
I would have to get clarity on that one. And I can't speak to, I'm not aware of any job postings, and I don't know how many candidates they actually interviewed, and I can't name those individuals.
Okay.
Um, the only reason why I'm here is I can kinda speak to the numbers that's on your spreadsheet and kind of address that. Um, we do have a budget and a commissioners for training, um, that is available for most offices, if they wanna come to us and ask. So, I do feel like any ongoing training that will be covered under that line. Um, we also have usually a surplus at the end for insurance, so I do feel like, not practice, we have enough money in there to cover that, depending, you know. I don't know the exact amount, I know she paid nine hundred and fifty, so once we get an audit, even if it's still under a five thousand dollar budget, I don't feel like we would have to come to an additional for that. Based on her contract, we are issuing her a surplus anyway, or a surplus pro, sorry, a surplus pro, so the cost between her contract and in-house on that, we're still paying for that expense. Um, the initial setup for that is three thousand, that's covered within our budget as well. Um, and so is the Microsoft license, we would be able to cover that.
Okay.
She, in conversation I've had with her, has not expressed wanting a paralegal, she stated that she could go on without that, and we could address that in the future, but it would be a conversation, but as of right now, she has no interest in requesting one. On my legal, um, on my legal, we do have a ten thousand dollar budget for office equipment, I believe, but that would also be covered underneath, it's about a hundred dollars a month for Lexis.
What is it?
Lexis.
Lexis, Lexis, Lexis.
It's a legal research platform, I'm developing a legal research one.
Do you have it?
Yes, but it's paid, ours is paid by the Indianapolis Attorney's Council, every, every, um, attorney office has a, and their own license.
License is four.
We don't have to report, the judges have it too.
Mr. Lawson, do you know, um, would she require to clock out or use time off if she's passed her turn to another client utter?
I can't.
I think those are questions that you're gonna have to, uh, pose to the whole county, if you're gonna ask legal counsel this, because it doesn't happen in the whole county. So, I don't know that you can particularly put this on one employee versus three hundred others. There are some employees that don't clock in and out currently in the county, and there are some that are supposed to work a thirty-five hour week, and they flex, so they don't.
And they work another job.
So, is that a-
That I don't know.
Well, that's my question, is, is, is she working on other?
That's a legal question.
Yeah, is she working on other?
But I'm saying, you can, I mean, yeah.
I think that's something that Jewel should be addressing, not-
Well, I think there are, well, that's a fair question, there are other employees that work at the county that do work other jobs, I know for a fact.
Yeah, there are.
And they're earning money from the county?
They're earning money from the county while working another job, yes.
Jewel, are you able to comment on the legality of that?
Yeah. Brilliant. Well, as you, as you addressed it, again, I, I, I wanna be direct, I, I, I do feel like, I don't know if there's, I wanna be careful in my words, I don't know if there's targeting or what, but I'm like, we went down this rapid hole, where I, I'm looking at, again, this individual, and I'm like, I've never seen this line of, of questioning towards this, towards an employee being hired. But again, there are other employees that work in the county, so what we, what we do for them, we're gonna do for all, so, go ahead.
So, like many things on law, there's no black and white answer to this, so I mean, this is another brave, brave one. If it is a situation, or if it is a salary employee, so if I'm a salary employee, and my obligation is a minimum of thirty-five hours a week, I can guarantee you, as an in-house attorney for either a municipal entity, so Lebanon, White Town, or whatever, or county, you're going to be spending well more than thirty-five hours a week representing your county, period. There is a question regarding ghost employment that comes into play. That ghost employment issue would come in really when you're talking about more of an hourly employee, where they are clocking in and clocking out. It's not a salary deposition, it's those that can potentially earn overtime. You cannot compensate somebody for, uh, on the municipal dime, for work done for somebody else. It, so it's, it would be a very fact-specific analysis, but I, what I would tell you is that I, it is not uncommon in the municipal where attorneys do work for other clients of this problem. I can, listen, I'm, I'm just gonna put this out there, because there's been a lot of discussion. First, I think it's very important that we talk about the facts, or one thing I wanna make sure, because I've heard it, I don't believe that the line item is two hundred and seventy-five, it's a hundred and seventy-five, or a hundred and seventy for the position, and then you're adding in things on top.
Thank you.
You're like the expenses. Beth used to work with me a taft, Beth Copeland did. The fact that she has left Taft and come to the county is a burden upon me and my life, because she's good. I hired, uh, uh, I know about Beth's background. She was at Indianapolis as the head of litigation for the city of Indianapolis, and then she was corporation counsel for the city of Kokomo. It's in the city of Kokomo where I worked with, uh, as an outside counsel helping the city. She is good at this. So, I, I, I don't want there to be any questions regarding her qualifications or her abilities to do this job. Um, again, it is a burden upon me that she is no longer with me, because that means I have to do more work, or I have to find more people to cover that work that she was performing for, uh, Taft before. It is, just on a qualifications basis, she is a great hire for the county. What do you wanna do with the money, that, that is completely different. You are going to get way over thirty-five hours a week worth of work from that, period. I know her work ethic, I know what she's got. The other issues that you're gonna have, that, that I've heard being talked about is, I think these matrices, matrixes-
Matrixes?
Matrixes are great, make sure you do get apples and apples.
Got it.
Thank you.
All right, great.
Just pull all the information in, and it should be pretty easy to pull all the expenses that were paid, because you have those records through the auditor's office, and then what is expected, this is, so it's a clear-cut analysis. I think I've gone way off the question that was asked, and, cause I think the question was, can you work outside? And it's, it depends, but it, generally speaking, I think, in a employee position, where you're not subject to overtime, and you're gonna get over that thirty-five hours for this, yeah, I, I think that's acceptable.
I appreciate your endorsement of her and the comments you make about her, her quality of work, that's really helpful to hear. And, um, your comment about apples and apples, absolutely agree, when I passed this out, I said, it's absolutely not complete, and that's part of the drill I wanted to go through, and probably still need to go through in terms of putting the right numbers in the, in the boxes.
Any other questions?
Madam President, you can speak?
Yes.
Thank you for your hard work, uh, Madam Vice President, Richie. You, you, and I've heard you say it several times with respect to, I've only been here eighteen months. And it was evident, maybe the first or second month that you were here, that, uh, you and, uh, President Hostetler over there grabbed the bull by the horns with respect to the budget process, and demonstrated to most of us that are sitting on the board here today, um, of the hard work that you two were able to do with, with respect to going out through the county, uh, all the elected officials, the department heads, putting the budget process together, and it was a smooth operation. So, please, don't take away any of your ability that, I've only been here eighteen months, I really don't know what I'm doing, because you do. And it was evident, it, it was, it was evident after that first two months of being here, so, thank you for your hard work. It's evident with respect to this here, she sat down and did a whole lot of homework with respect to gathering these numbers here. I think it is an important process, I don't think, as Councilman Williams said, that it's laughable, quote-unquote. There's nothing laughable that I, I added about it at all, when I have phone calls coming in, when we look at social media, everybody in this room, I'm gonna say, probably most everybody in this room has looked at social me- social media with respect to the process that has taken place here in the last three weeks. And in my able-to-be-humble opinion, it was just wrong. Councilman Williams, you very eloquently told us three years ago, not all of us on this board, but for those of us that were here, you said, hey, we need our own counts, and you went through the process, you had seven or eight people send it, we opened it up. We opened it up, and we said, if anybody is interested in this position to serve the Boone County Council as a legal representative, put forth your representation, cause we all wanna look at it. And we all looked at that information, there were seven, eight, nine of them, and, uh, give or take a few, I don't have the exact number, but we meticulously went through tho- those programs, or those, uh, portfolios that were sent to us, and then we made a conscious decision, let's go with Taft. And that's the way it was. What I'm upset about, there's nothing laughable about it, what I'm concerned about is the way that the commissioners did this. And you're absolutely correct, they can do whatever they want, Councilman Williams, they can hire whoever they want, it's their job. I am a big believer in the rule of law, but there's also this thing called doing the right thing, because it's the right thing to do. This county, this community here in Boone County, Indiana, deserves to be treated with a lot more respect than what we have received. And I'm not talking about the council up here, I'm talking about all of us as citizens of Boone County, Indiana, than the way that we have been received over these last three weeks. To go in there and fire somebody, affect somebody's livelihood, to hire a legal counsel, just saying, we wanna hire Beth, and I, I don't question anything that you said, Jewel, about her qualification. And I think it's fair to say that all six, seven of us up here would agree that she is highly qualified. I don't question that at all, no doubt at all in my mind that she's well-qualified. What I do question is the process that the commissioners, not Don Lawson, but the other two, the process that they went through with respect to bringing in this new counsel, without saying, hey, is there anybody else involved that would wanna apply for this position? The PR director? Commissioner Lawson hadn't even told about it, it was a slap upside the back of his head that said, hey, we're gonna hire a PR director. Thirty-six thousand dollars a year, he's gonna be paid thirty-three thousand dollars a year? There weren't any applications that came in for him, for, for, for that position, they just made the decision, and you're absolutely right, Councilman Williams, they can hire anybody they want to, but I'm gonna say it again, you do the right thing, because it's the right thing to do, not only for their position of power, but more importantly, for the citizens of Boone County, Indiana. There has to be some decency, not only on the council board, but on the commissioners' board. There had, they, they didn't even have the decency to include Commissioner Don Lawson in these conversations. Didn't even have that decency, there is nothing, quote, laughable, unquote, about this process at all. It, it is very concerning that the process that has happened over the last three weeks is, is just, and, and I don't use this word very often, disgusting. It has just been plain disgusting, the way that this has happened. You, you can sit there and smile, it's okay, but I'm telling you, there needs to be some decency with respect to treating people, doing the thing, the right thing, because it's the right thing to do. And this process that has taken place these last three weeks, I say, open it up, nothing against Mrs. Copeland, nothing against her at all. Open up the process, bring those applications in, in the same way that we did with the, uh, Sheriff Nielsen. I remember going up to him afterwards, Councilman Williams, and asking him, how many people applied for this? Nobody, they put it out there all across the country, nobody, but he ended up getting the job.
So, the issue before us today-
I'm sorry, can I-
Is, can, the issue for us today is, do we want to approve a new position, or do we want to leave it as a contract? Is there a motion?
Go ahead, John. Go ahead, make the motion, and then we'll discuss.
Yeah, um, I would move that we table, leave it as a contract, position it this time.
Is there a second question? Discussion?
I, we need more information, but like I said, I agree with everybody, but that, it, it's not our job to hire people. That's what we gotta get down to, I mean, like it or not, it's not our job, our job is to write the checks.
So-
And so, to me, keep it in the, in the contract, we come up to budget time, we create a budget line and go.
So, so what more information are we looking for? And, and before I ask that, let me remind everyone, it was, it was Kevin- And before I ask that, let me remind everyone, it was, it was Kevin Van Horn who made the comment to everyone. If the commissioners need something or want something and they ask for it, we should give it to them. But nevertheless, as I was saying, what information are we looking for?
I mean, I had sent Mr. Pell an email about two weeks ago with a list of questions. I'm glad you got some answers because I've been struggling to get answers from Mr. Pell or Byer. That email has not been responded to yet. I did speak to Mr. Pell yesterday. I understand he has a lot going on. He said he was gonna send me the salary offer yesterday. I do not have it, so I don't know if there's any other information. I, what I personally would like to see is, what is that full compensation package? Because that does, a new job position and the full compensation package does fall under us.
So you want to know what the full compensation package is?
Yes. I'd like to see this.
So you want to see what the salary is? Debbie, have you been told a potential salary for this to be?
It's one seventy-five, but that's where I come in with the.
So you want to know?
My understanding, speaking with legal counsel, is compensation is more than just salary and so.
Jewel, what else with salary? What else would we need to know?
So, under the statutes, compensation is all of the benefits that an individual receives. So that includes the insurance premiums and that nature, the other costs that are associated with the employment of that individual. That are directed to that person. So I, I don't know what your full suite of benefits are.
Right.
But it, it's whatever the full suite of benefits are, go towards compensation.
What, you're here representing HR. Are there, we offer a standard package of benefits, right?
So health insurance, PTO, holidays, the long-term disability per.
So we want to know the salary, the benefits, what else?
Just the full compensation package.
I mean, you're right, so you're saying.
I mean, ideally a job description too.
Job description, full-time salary, like I'm just looking at the, the document here I put together. Health insurance and related benefits, which would include short-term, long-term disability, pension, per, HSA distribution.
Are you able, are you, yeah, are you able to get her?
Five and then twenty-six?
Yeah.
Because some of those would be different.
Can you just get that to them?
Yes.
Okay. Or Debbie, I'm sorry, I don't know who I have to.
Well, just to look at the percentages.
Are you able to just give that to them? Okay.
The only thing the county pays for is her HSA and long-term.
So we got salary.
The other portion and a portion of the dental, but yeah.
Salary, benefits, and the suite.
Really the first four lines under the annual fee for the services. Like one, two, three, four, five, the five lines and just delete short-term.
And I think clarification on, like these other.
It wouldn't advertise.
Uh, sorry, that's a brand name.
So again, I.
The thing that we received yesterday, the document we received yesterday where it talks about like twenty, I think it's at twenty-five hundred and.
Yeah, the document that you sent Debbie, that you didn't author, but Megan threw up. I'm sorry, Amber did. And maybe getting some clarity on some of those items.
So there's a motion and a second to leave this as a contract position and table it.
Let's have more on the discussion. So you're asking Jennifer for job descriptions. Are you making your decision on this based on the job description?
It's something that we've asked for before, and I've been asking for the last two-ish weeks and we have not received yet.
I just, I go back to, to, to Councilman Reiner's point and the one I made. Are, are we making a decision again based on a job description? So we're asking for something that doesn't fall in our lane. Help, what is a job description gonna make?
So in the past, we've relied on the job description and then the benchmarking in the compensation study to determine what the salary is going to be. And that is within the council's authority, again, to create, determine how many positions and employees we need. And then determine what salary is going to be. So we don't, we don't have that information currently.
But we, we, we never made a decision on a salary ordinance change based off of a job description. And according to, I keep going back to, according to Jewel, a job description shouldn't determine whether or not we can say, yes, we should approve this. I just, I think we're, we're waiting, we're waiting into dangerous territories in a slippery slope that if we. So we've asked for the salary and the benefits according to this.
So we actually have. We've asked if there's been a job description. And then if that job description was used to place that new position in the compensation study. So that we know what those ranges are between the minimum, the midpoint, and the maximum. So I don't believe I'm asking for anything that we haven't done the last few years since we received the compensation study that was completed.
Was that under the compensation?
I was about to say, hasn't it historically went to the compensation committee?
Be handled under the compensation committee.
Right.
And then brought to the council.
Right, hasn't that went to the compensation committee?
For a bit in house lawyer?
No, no, nope, not in house lawyer because it's the first time we did it.
For any position.
For any position, hasn't that went to the compensation committee?
Yes, but then it was done, but that was all done before it was brought to us for the new position.
So shouldn't this go to the compensation committee then?
Yeah, but we've got to talk about compensation committees here in a little bit. But point is though, like we still had that before the council, didn't you think? If you remember back to, thinking it was twenty twenty-three, when the former HR director was asked to be for an HR assistant. We approved a part-time HR assistant, but we did not approve that rate until that job description was given to. Now it's NFP and they were able to rank that position, tell us what the recommended range of salary was. So that, that was all done before it came back to us.
So this is consistent.
Given you a job description.
Yes.
So this is consistent with what we've done in past.
Yes.
And consist, all right, great, thank you. So it's went to the compensation committee, so should we send this to the, why, why wouldn't we send this to the compensation committee?
We would ultimately, wouldn't we, if we got it?
But it normally goes to the compensation committee before it comes back to the council. Yeah?
I don't, no, I'm not, I'm not, I didn't say anything.
I just thought you'd do like this, like.
Because I, I was thinking, because I don't, I'm, I'm, as part of the compensation committee. And I, I think some of this happened at budget time. And it, it didn't, I think it bypassed the compensation committee if it was at budget time, Aaron. I'm just saying, like, I'm, I'm not.
I'm, I'm just saying, Debbie brought up a point, thank you for the, the member of pressure. It's went to the compensation committee. In the past, before it's come to the council, Jennifer's been on the compensation committee. She just verified that it has. Why wouldn't we send this to the compensation committee?
It depen, it depends.
The compensation committee was dissolved after you guys selected NFP. So it was the HR director working closely with Don Lamb during that process. And then they recreated the compensation committee in the fall of last year. And I believe you guys only really met once, but there were no real identifiers before you at that time. Thank you. So the way it would happen is if a, if a department head or elected official needed to change a job description or wanted to add a new employee. They would meet with the former HR director. She would work with NFP to find out where that position should be benchmarked. The sorority recall, there were a few positions that we weren't aware that their benchmarking had changed. I tried to address that memo that went out last fall. Because we weren't aware of that and that was one of the processes that we were trying to get established with the compensation committees. That we were aware when those things were changing.
I just, I just, I just thought, we just had a discussion earlier today about the compensation committee. When we were talking about Amber's compensation and the discussions around salaries and things. So just, we could, so are, are we gonna send this to the compensation committee or not? This is simple.
Do we have a compensation committee?
Yeah, so commissioners.
You have a commissioners.
Yeah, we'll talk about that. And Aaron, I just want to say when I did that, like, I've got a fifty-nine-year-old brain and I wasn't really clear. But then Amber or Kaylee comes through and tells me the clarity that I was trying to get. Because I, I don't remember when we started and when we stopped.
It's fine. Are we gonna send this to the compensation committee?
I would think we would. Wouldn't we send it to the compensation committee in addition to receiving it ourselves? And then figure out if we don't have NFP, how we're gonna actually place it on a grid that doesn't currently exist if we've terminated the contract.
Or I don't know if you're, you're able to take the job description and work with NFP or benchmark them yourself.
That would be up to the commissioners to approve that because it would cost.
Right.
An additional contract, but we do have access to an Indiana site that has the similar. Like I can look up similar counties and municipalities and look at what they're paying certain positions and I can reach out to them and ask for their job description.
You have a fully functioning compensation committee. They're happy to take it on.
And then I could take that too.
The compensation committee?
But those are gonna need, they're gonna need a metric by which to compare it to.
Do both.
So there's a motion and a second to table this. We're ready for vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those same side. Motion carries. New business, the CDB discussion on the innkeeper's tax.
Hi, I would like to think that what I have is much easier.
Thank you.
I'm Allison Goodline. I am with Discover Boone County, which is Boone County Tourism. Boone County is experiencing unprecedented growth. We are the second fastest growing county in the state and in the latter quarter of twenty twenty-four. We boasted the second highest occupancy rate in Indiana. This rapid expansion brings new challenges but also immense potential, especially in tourism. What does this mean for our community? Something that it means more jobs, more economy growth, more opportunities for businesses and residents alike. In keeper's tax, how Discover Boone County is funded is not paid by Boone County residents unless they stay in a Boone County hotel. It is paid by visitors who choose to experience everything our community has to offer. Tourism is already a major economic driver for Boone County, bringing in over a hundred thousand dollars every single day from visitor spending. This spending fuels our local businesses, restaurant shops, and attractions, strengthening our economy and assuring that our community thrives. In twenty twenty-three, for every dollar spent by visitors, fifty-two cents stayed right here in Boone County, directly contributing to our gross county product. Without tourism, each Boone County resident would have to pay an additional two hundred and seventy-five dollars per year in taxes. To maintain the same level of services we currently enjoy. But thanks to our thriving tourism industry, those dollars are coming from visitors instead. The Senate Bill two fifty-two tax increase allows us to invest in the resources we desperately need. Marketing infrastructure, workforce, to ensure that Boone County remains a top destination for visitors. More visitors mean more local jobs, stronger small businesses, and a vibrant, thriving community that benefits us all. We have the opportunity to shape the future of tourism in Boone County, expanding our reach, creating new experiences. And ensuring that we grow in a way that benefits everyone. Thank you for your support as we take this important step forward. I'm excited about what's ahead for Boone County and I hope that you all are as well. So we have Senate Bill two fifty-two right now that is going through third reading in the Senate. We do have bipartisan support. We also have support from our communities here in Boone County. That actually have innkeeper's tax being paid. So our three largest communities, West Town, Lebanon, and Seinesville. So we are excited about this bill. We are really trying to keep up with some of our peer communities. That are already at eight percent or higher. And we know that, especially with the league district coming in, we are going to need additional services, especially in hospitality and tourism. And this will help us to be able to provide some of that support in the future for those. So what we're asking for today is a letter of support.
And that letter of support was Brian, you're meeting packets. Is there any questions?
Do you have a projection of what the increase will yield in terms of?
So actually, in this little packet right here, if you turn to. This page right here, so next to the back page. We are going to project that the additional will bring in about six hundred and eighty thousand and change every year. The average room rate in Boone County, according to Zartico in September of twenty twenty-four, is about a hundred and thirteen dollars per night. So by increasing the innkeeper's tax an additional three percent, it would add only an average of three dollars and forty-one cents to each room, each night. Boone County also has the advantage of not having paid parking when people stay in hotels. Which, if anyone says that people are going to drive elsewhere for an additional slight raise. This is about the price of a gallon of gas per night. So. Any other questions?
Do we have to take formal, do we have to take formal action on the, Debbie, on the letter or just?
Do you have to make a motion to?
A move that we approve the CDB support letter and submit it.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All those opposed or赞同?
Aye.
All those opposing side?
Thank you.
Mr. Nance is the corrections panel report.
Michael Nance, the executive director of community corrections. In the interest, interest of time, I was gonna be very brief today. I committed or presented this entire report to the commissioners last week. I think most of you were present to some degree. I've also emailed this entire report to your body. So if there's not specific questions, I'm not sure that I really even, I don't have an obligation from the DOC to go through this the way that I do with the commissioners. I do think that because you're the council, there's probably a little bit of value in at least reviewing the financial portion of what we do and how that saves you money every year. There's a ton of other really important data that we collect. But as you can see on page thirteen of the report. Total cost savings for the county with all the programs that we do, the way we arrive at that number is how many clients that we supervise. Those clients would be in your jail or in the department of correction if they were not on our program. So there is a direct daily savings. It's not hypothetical in nature. It's ten million, one hundred twenty-six thousand dollars. We do get some grant dollars and last year, a little bit of money from you as the council. This coming year will be a little bit more because of the justice center. But you can still see, once you take that back away, it's still a total savings of eight point six million dollars last year. And again, I did a much longer presentation at the commissioners' meeting, which I believe you can find online. Or if you have specific questions, if you've gone through the report, it'd be glad to get your results.
You've always pointed out to us the drug screens. And I know that at our community corrections meeting, you showed us how those are decreasing. Will you share that with the council?
Yeah. So in twenty twenty-four, we collected almost four thousand drug screens. As you can see, three thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine. Of those, one thousand four hundred and sixty-five were positive, which is roughly a thirty-seven percent positive rate. So if you look at that and say fourteen hundred positive drug streams, that seems like a lot. I would agree with you. But when you compare it to how many drug streams we actually collect, I would say having a success rate or a negative rate of over sixty percent. Means that our staff's doing a pretty good job. We're getting people referred to the appropriate entities in town to try to address their substance abuse issues. This coming year, we're gonna try to collect data specifically on how many individuals test positive, not just positive results. We polled that the best we could after advisory board meeting and came up with a number of around probably four hundred or so individuals that. And that makes sense. Once somebody's starting to use or struggle, they often test positive more than one time in our office before we can intervene and get that taken care of. So that would make sense to me.
And then weren't you also gonna look into how many were, had prescriptions that?
Yeah, if you look there at the bottom, it's the most positive, most commonly used substances. Marijuana is always the front runner every year. And then methamphetamine, followed closely by buprenorphine or Suboxone. That is supposed, the way we enter in our system, if it's done correctly, but it's extremely labor intensive. Is if a person has a prescription for Suboxone, then it doesn't count on this report as a positive. What we see with our eye and what we see on paper just doesn't feel right. So we think maybe it's, we gotta just figure out a better way for staff to be entering that. So we're really capturing that data accurately.
And so it may, the number of positive tests may actually be lower.
It could, yeah, go down a little bit. Yep.
How do you determine if a person, let's assume that they have the prescription or the spot, how do you determine if they're taking too much?
So the, the easiest way that we do that, if we suspect that, is we do a daily pill count. We'll have them bring it to us and just count, like what day did you get your prescription? How many pills are in the bottle? Does that match with how many you're supposed to be taking? That's the easiest way to do it and usually the fastest way to find if they're not. Our labs do have the ability to give us a level. But we do what we can argue in court, and that's hard to argue in court about levels and, and our labs don't want to necessarily have that conversation. So if we suspect that, the way that we do it most frequently is just by counting their pills.
And is that prescription paid for by the individual or does the counting pay for it?
No, it's.
Is it paid for by the individual?
Yeah, yep.
Thank you.
Are there any further questions?
The fellow that took off was supposed to report from the jail to you. When you move into the Justice Center, will he be escorted down to you?
Can I answer that in two parts? Yes, but also that report that came out wasn't accurate, and I would encourage everyone to go read the court transcripts before they start throwing me or the sheriff under the bus.
Any further...
Tony Eric, Sheriff of Boone County. Yes, we will look into that, most definitely, because it's one of the things that I thought of when I saw the report last night, too. I haven't had a chance to pick Michael's brain, but we've been working together, and we'll make sure that we make adjustments in there to do anything that we can to help Community Corrections or then help us. We're going to be a partner in that, so that's my concern.
And he is back in custody, correct?
He is back in custody.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Nance.
Thank you.
Mr. Parr, Highway Annual Report.
I talk fast and talk a lot, but I won't be as short as, uh, Michael and stuff. My shortness is I won't get through hardly any of this information. So, I shortened it from the Commissioners' Report to try to break it more geared toward this board. So, if you did listen, then some of it will be review and some of it will be some new stuff. So, that's the same thing I have in all of our slides, to make sure we keep reminding our staff and the public of what our vision, to get everybody to their destination safely. That's why we're out there. Won't go through all these things individually, but want to bring it to everyone's attention, the work that we did 2024. This is mostly in-house work that we've done for various different reasons, obviously taking care of blacktop roads, converting roads, and our herbicide application and vegetation control has been, we've accelerated that program substantially over the last several years due to issues that we have seen around the county. Road projects, so these are more contractors, work that we have going on. Obviously, still getting blacktop roads, reconstruction, various different road treatments that we do with contractors that we have to engage to get all this work done in the construction season that we have available in Indiana. Work that we've done on our bridges and small structures, don't need to read through everything, but highlight the, the bridge decks and the, the bridge work that we're doing to extend the life of the bridges. It's not that everything was neglected. It was maybe not known of what, what work we could do with some of the tools and equipment we could purchase and do with our own maintenance staffs, our own maintenance staff to be able to get, extend the life of our bridges, which are our very, our most expensive asset that we maintain. Funding awards, so these are federal aid projects. All these won't be a secret to you guys because we signed up the letter of funding commitment for federal dollars. So, federal dollars are 18 cents a gallon is paid in every gallon of gas in the country, and then it gets redistributed back to the states. And INDOT is the one that controls that in Indiana, and we have to submit calls, or we have to submit projects during a call for projects to get federal funds. So, we're going to compete with other local public agencies around the state for these federal dollars. So, this particular bridge is one that we got awarded in, in 24. We submitted the application in late '23, and then awards were in '24. You can see on the map there is Bridge 401 on County Road 300 South. Just obviously in poor condition with the scour underneath, and it's a, it's one of those that has a couple of culverts. And in, in theory, that's a good idea, but always they get blocked up like this, and then as the water flows through one side, it's not hydraulically sized for that, so it has a lot of scour underneath the footings, which was a major concern for this one. This particular bridge, and it do, and its cost is substantial as due to the, the future corridor. There's been a corridor study completed along 300 South, 146th Street corridor. So, it's being sized for the, the future corridor width. We're not building a corridor, but this bridge is anticipated to last 100 years. And there's an expectation in the next 100 years that that road will get expanded. We wouldn't want to spend additional dollars to widen a bridge or reconstruct a bridge after that, after it be getting reconstructed now. Another project, federal dollars. This one is Bridge 162 in the south central part. It's on a rural road, as you can see in the picture. We've already done the design on this one. This one's got the two phases, construction and construction engineering phases are going to be federally funded with 80% federal dollars. Another awards for 2024 is community crossings. These are, this is Bridge 17 up on 1075 West, north of 47. So, it's a rehabilitation project, putting a new deck, a recent, a new concrete surface on the deck on that bridge. Another one was community crossings. Just up the road from that one, they were both awarded in, in 2024, and they're both projects are complete. We've awarded them, we, we have applied for them together, and they were awarded together, and they did a contract. So, community crossings is 50/50. So, we pay 50% of construction, and we have to pay all the other costs associated with the project. So, different funding mechanism, and those are state dollars. An additional award for community crossings, this one is for asphalt resurfacing various roads, and also a full-up reclamation on County Route 500 East. So, a substantial project there. Just continuing to see these roads south off of 32 get a lot of activity from the development that's happening in the, the Whitestown area, construction traffic mainly, not even fully built, and we're seeing a lot of our roads get substantial amount of wear and tear because of the, those projects in, in that area. So, here's a, I won't read through all of these, but a substantial number of projects that were completed in 2024. Provide a picture of Bridge 192, which is on 300 South. So, this bridge was also along the 146th Street corridor. And you can see it's built wider, but we still maintain a two-lane road through the bridge, so it's available for future expansion. That's similar to what we're going to do on Bridge 401. It's the same stream, it's just, just downstream from this is where Bridge 401 is.
They planned for four lanes eventually.
Yeah, so the third, the, the corridor study that was completed in 2020, 2017, 18, 19, but it didn't get finalized until after COVID, showed a four-lane section through this area to facilitate all the development and all the, the users of the roadway. So, structure projects, so instead of just reading the list, I can show you where they were all at around the county, various locations that these projects were completed in '24. Another one to highlight and want to talk about is road safety. So, we've done our local road safety plan, was finalized in 2020 also. We worked, as we were doing a local road safety plan, we identified two major hotspots with a lot of crashes. These, these two particular curves I'm highlighting here are 96th Street toward Road and 96th Street east of Moore Road. So, about 15 crashes per year between the two, so in a five-year span, it's 75 crashes, a lot of crashes. Wasn't a lot of injury, but a lot of runoff the road. There's utility pole strikes, a lot of property damage with the signs and vehicles. We took both of these at two different times and were able to do, reconstruct the curve. They were, they were built for 25 miles per hour without getting into the weeds of how it's designed. We were able to do a super elevated curve, so make it where the slope all runs to the inside radius, and then add the high friction surface treatment, and we virtually eliminated all the crashes. So, in a four-year span, we've had three total between the two curves. So, a major change just by doing, doing those two, two curve projects. Just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention, that we are taking action on local road safety plan that we currently have. Paved road conditions. You can see that we maintain the 6.8 on the, the PESA ratings. This is just for the paved roads. Why I want to highlight this briefly is there's legislation right now in House Bill 1461. It got amended yesterday, and I haven't read all the amendments, but at one point, they were going to allow some MVH percentage changes if your PESA ratings were at a seven. So, knowing those around, that I deal with around the state and counties, it's not a lot of them at a seven or above. So, it's, it's hard to get there. We have very good blacktop roads. A lot of that's because we don't have as many blacktop roads as, as many of the surrounding counties. But I wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. We are at a 6.8. We have maintained that with a road preservation program. Work order trends, you can see that those continue to drop substantially as long as we've been tracking those. This does exclude some data from this year or from '24 due to the, the data loss that we had. But in general, we still see a decrease in those work orders. That's, we've become proactive. Instead of weighing on work orders, we don't know what our issues are. We've been able to track what we're completing and how we're addressing the, the concerns that get called in. So, the trends in general, they continue to fall. The only one that's increased has been the drainage concerns. A lot of that varies from year to year with the amount of precipitation that we get. However, in '23, because we've seen the, the drop in all these work orders, we can be proactive, and we're actually have our staff out, you know, doing road assessments and looking into specific pipes and culverts as they do those road assessments, so we can find the drainage concerns and address them before they make a hole in the roadway or before they become an issue that the public brings to our attention. But those issues also become work orders, so we make sure that they're in our system and we're getting them taken care of. So, 2025, I'm not going to read through all that, but a lot of projects we're planning for '25. We're adding additional road preservation methods. We've seen the impact of what we can do with less dollars over more square yards of area to get covered and extend the life of the paved roads. So, we're doing a similar thing with bridge decks. At the bottom there, you see bridge deck ceiling. We've been tracking for some time what we're doing with our roads. We haven't always had enough revenue to be able to address bridge preservation with the recent budget, the recent ARP funds, bond funds. We've been able to get on a lot of these really bad bridges and small structures. Now, we're able to dedicate funding to the, the bridge preservation projects. So, we're adding different sealers for bridge decks. The earliest one we would do is a bridge deck ceiling. We can do it with our own staff, and then it goes to more of a, a polymeric overlay or a thin deck overlay, and then to more rigid deck overlay, and we're going to be doing some more of those to extend the life of more bridges. So, we're not always just doing replacements, that we've had so many that need to be replaced. Along those bridges, planned projects in 2025 for those bridges and small structures, you can read through the list there. But on the next page is a map where you can see where they're all at. Not that you'll remember all of this, but they're scattered around the country, around the countryside, really, and they're mostly in the rural areas. We have the structures listed on here, some of which are ARP funds, and some of which are community crossings, and also federal aid projects are all on the same map. So, a variety of projects going on in 2025 that actually go to construction is what's anticipated with these. Also, 2025, projects ongoing, it started a few weeks ago, replacing approximately 3,500 signs, which is substantial amount. Any, any of those signs you see on that map that would come up as being in poor condition or poor retro reflectivity? So, what you can see at nighttime when your headlights hit a sign, we have a substantial number of those in poor condition. Of about our 5,500 total signs, about 3,500 of those are approximately are getting replaced. So, when we took this project through the federal aid process, we're expecting 90% federal, 10% local, because it is a safety project. And as this project went to letting, INDOT was able to have some safety dollars left over from other projects that didn't let or come under estimate, and they dedicated, they paid the additional 10% as well. So, what was going to cost us about $120,000 did not cost us that $120,000. All we had to do is pay our 10% for design and our 10% for construction inspection, and they covered the 100% for the construction phase. And that project's ongoing right now. I get a lot of questions of what's all the white marks on all these signposts? That's because they're getting ready to get replaced. So, calling in locates and locating where the utilities are around all those signs, I'm sure has been quite a challenge for the locate companies, but they're all over the place trying to get these signs replaced, and they're trying to do about 100 a day with a couple of different groups. So, there's going to be a lot of that going on for the next few months. Additional projects that are in development that our team is working on at various stages. These include federal aid projects, locally funded projects, community crossing projects. Just wanted to kind of highlight some of, all of that's going on in a variety of locations around the county. Went back and forth on whether to share this again, but wanted to bring it to your all attention and possibly have more public engaged in the meeting to know that there's additional projects going on in Boone County that we don't necessarily have control of, but has brought, been brought to our attention at the Highway Department, and we've been working with different developers along this same tone. The water line project is what you're seeing on this map that has been, they, they talked to the Highway Department because we have the permitting process, but they'll also be cutting across roadways. Much of this is anticipated to be an easement. Some of it's in pretty early stages, but they have provided us a route, and this is just right now a draft. But it is, has been posted on, on CEG, on Citizens Energy Group's website. Lefty Utilities has shared this with us, so I wanted to put it on the map to kind of show the, the route they have identified right now. So, the blue line that says London Utilities and then the bright green line, both of those are a lot closer to construction than the two up north is our, our understanding. So, the, the purple line and the more like orange line seem to be future phases that may come within the next few years. However, they are working toward, you know, getting, they've got to acquire easements, but they'll be doing work along the right of way in the area of road projects and bridge projects and drain projects and small structure projects that we have going on. Long additional work proposed in Boone County. I talked to the Commissioners substantially about this, but one thing that I've talked about for a long time, but haven't brought to public meetings a lot until here recently is, this is just one project. This is the Lily Foundry project, and all the blue area you can see there is in, in Lebanon's annexed area, and that's what they control, and that would be the area that they would have, you know, the authority to permit and do road improvements. And I wanted to put this map on here, not for the specifics of everything you see, you know, around the fringe, but those are gravel roads just south of it. So, our concern has been, since this all kind of got started, our thoroughfare plan was done in 2017, and, you know, we didn't contemplate this level of users and this level of traffic generators on, in the area of roadways that are gravel roads that are 18, 19 feet wide. And what we have found, or what you can see on the map, is that much of the area that's been annexed is agriculture fields. Well, they don't generate a lot of traffic year-round, and the few residents that are out there, many of which seem to look like they're going to remain for the time being, those people are going to see a major change. And the only way to really address this in the big picture all the way around this fringe is to update the thoroughfare plan and talk about what we want, what the public wants, what elected officials want, what public safety wants for these roadways as this all gets developed. There's plans in place, or we've seen maps that show roads throughout the LEAP district and new interchange up north, you know, that's already been let up there by 300 North. That, that's internal, but there's still going to be people accessing the site that don't go off by 65 or that come from other state roads or other material roads that we have that we maintain. And how they get to these sites, I think, needs to be addressed. So, recently talked to the Area Plan Commissioner, been talking to the Commissioners about, you know, the comp plan's getting updated or discussion of the comprehensive plan and tying in the thoroughfare plan and talking about the local road safety plan, because we're going to engage the same members of the public. And our concern is what happened up north on the, the first Lily project that came in. We're in the middle of trying to make these decisions and reach out to the public and try to get everybody's input and public safety, and now we're doing it again on this project. And then the meta-project that's been announced is kind of north and west of this, will be doing it again. So, if we can find a way to get a, a plan for what happens as these things develop around these sites, I think would help the public understand that what we can do and what we can't do, but also what roads are going to remain or are going to be taken away as this gets developed. Inside the LEAP district, we still got to have connectivity. We still have to have a way for people to get to their destination. The reason that one is a highlight is this, we have a bridge, so if we would go through a thoroughfare plan, we can bring up items like this and what we need to ask the developer to address, or how do we reroute roads so we prevent issues like this? Just south of that new Lily site is just, and it's just west of the existing business park. It already gets a lot of truck traffic, and this intersection construction is, is not suitable for semis to go through there. And you can see it's been damaged, this bridge substantially over the last several years as traffic has increased. So, something we regularly address, and we want to make sure that we can talk about it. I'd rather do that before it gets to the development plan stage, kind of where we are now. And if we could do that with a thoroughfare plan, I think would really help get us on a, a whole plan instead of just little pieces at a time.
How long would that thoroughfare plan take?
How long?
How long would that take?
A lot of that depends on the public engagement. I mean, you always want to get elected officials, you want to get public safety. You want to really get some meetings out with the folks that would be directly impacted, get input. Large meetings, you don't get a lot of good consistent feedback, and not everybody gets a chance to speak. It can take some time to put together. The one we did in 2017 is a little foggy. I don't remember. You, we could be looking at eight to 10 months worth of time of bringing up ideas, scheduling meetings, getting additional input, and then putting the final plan together. But as the comprehensive plan was being discussed, that's where I was like, hey, why don't we do this together? The thoroughfare plan actually becomes part of the comprehensive plan. So, if zoning changes, you need to look at what the roads need to be as you're accessing those sites. So, it's all, it's tied together, but we did it separately when we did the thoroughfare plan because the comp plan was not getting updated, so it's been part of a larger discussion. Bond fund projects, this is one I've added, wanted to talk to you all about. So, 2020, there was, uh, bonds that were done for infrastructure. It was a debt service levy. This was a list that was provided, the top two boxes there that were provided as the specific projects that were going to be paid for with those bonds. It was $5.3 million of bonds. We completed all those projects, all the gravel road, all the gravel road conversions that were included in those projects. And then additional projects were also completed using those same bond funds. We were able to leverage community crossing dollars for the bridges that are listed. We were also able to use community crossing dollars for the small, for two of the small structures, the additional small structures listed. So, we were able to maximize those funds and do additional projects with those. So we were able to maximize those funds and do additional projects with those. Wanted to bring that to everybody's attention because in 2020, well, here's a map that makes it a little easier for everybody else to see kind of where they are. I picture them all. I was part of all the projects, so I know where they're all at. But in general, that's the, the map of where all the, the bond-funded projects got completed. And then the bond, number one, is supposed to roll off in 2025, is my understanding, and it would have to be renewed. And there was various discussions, obviously, bond fund was part of those discussions and how all that got taken care of in 2020. So renewing those, renewing that initial bond, it was supposed to roll off in 2025. I'm not sure who does that or how that gets taken care of, but it has been discussed previously. And I don't know how we move that forward, looking into that in the future.
We still work with ICE North, ICE North, the North, basically ICE North.
So who ushered that through the county part of it, though? That was the, that's the part I can...
Bob.